First, I want to introduce the presentation of the code. But we just stay on T C for a few classes.
Forward, mark. Color, hold. Uh, raise. Reset. College.
What do we need? Let me not say it forever. To the Republic of America's citizens. One nation under our individual and the liberty of the interest of all.
Care. Color. Ready, cut, cameras, mark. Eye, face. Forward, mark. Uh, face. Order. College.
Yeah, if we got what we said, would you please tell us your name, your class, what your plans are for after high school?
Good evening, my name is Cadet Lieutenant Jason Smith. I'm in fourth grade this year and after high school, I plan on going to college to study cybersecurity.
Good evening, my name is Cadet Vincent Justin Busenya, I'm a senior in high school. And my plan after high school is to listen to baby.
Good evening. I am Cadet Lieutenant, junior grade, jump off for us. I'm eleven grade and after high school, I plan on going to a minute.
Good evening, my name is Cadet Lieutenant Junior Gray, I'm a Rosa. I'm a senior this year and I'm heading up high school to United States.
Bye. Thank you.
Always good to remember and appreciate legendary grand elephants. Tonight is no exception. This is Leslie Smith though, who passed away this summer. She's the recipient of an honorary diploma. Her children are being prosecuted, she and her husband, who's here from Atlanta, in forty. And they quite splash in the business world here. In the world of conservation, natural resources and philanthropy. It was Mrs. Smith call and her husband who donated one hundred and seventy-five acres of their own property. Which created the botanical garden of Gensmore. That is all their extended property. Uh, she and he were quite the giver, sinner, shaker, you see their name in this town. We honor her and remember her. Next, we also lost Dr. Bill Ware this summer. A lifetime educator, coach, teacher, principal, and dean. A lifetime of educational expertise. Also quite a legend around this town. Uh, being the husband of this panware. That's legendary in and of itself to be her husband, I don't know if there was any disrespect. Bill was quite a fellow, one year principal with us at Fair Street Elementary. Uh, most of his career here, uh, he spent a short time in Miami Ariza. One year at Fair Street Elementary, many years, twenty-seven or eight years at Burnout University. Where he was the dean of the college of education. Uh, it was most appropriate at Dr. Ware's memorial service. The congregation paid tribute to this teachers, teacher. The congregation saying. Well, uh. The road, the road was out of town. So we are signed that just to him. Thank you. All right, we have the citizens, the families. Do we have anybody from the legislature? One member will be willing to use your microphone on. I think the motion, we've got the agenda. Oh, the motion goes to Mr. Mitchell, second, that's second, uh, Mr. Smith, all those in favor. Motion carries, motion to approve from six and seven. All right, and motion to approve of minutes as well as the agenda by Mr. Smith, I hear second. That's second by Mr. Mitchell, all those in favor. Motion carries, uh, Mrs. Penn. Is wanting to go over the preliminary financials for June and July.
Okay, I have a question this evening, uh, the seventh preliminary for June. And our results are, um, we are at year-to-date revenues of seventy-five point eight million. That's a hundred point one percent of our budgeted revenues. Expenditures are seventy-four point nine million and that's ninety-eight point nine percent of our budgeted expenditures. Right now, we are at a revenue of expenditures of nine hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, adding to our fund balance, our fund balance is sitting on our slot number twenty-one. Last year, um, at this time of the fund house was nineteen forty-three. And we were, um, a hundred and one point six percent of our revenue. And one hundred and four percent of expenditures, expenditures are less. At this point, if it wasn't more or less, and revenues were closer to more. So, we're still working to close June so that's the analysis, so we're at the bottom of course. Um, at that table.
I'll read from the same spot.
Yes, sausage seats on for June or egg hundred and thirty-nine. One, one.
I have a motion to accept the five hundred, one motion next down. My motion, Mr. Smith, second, second, that is four of all of the way, okay, July.
This is the first report on July, um. July, uh, revenue courses lows four point seven percent of the most of the other activities revenues. Uh, expenditures are nine point zero percent, which is, um, pretty normal. This time last year, we were at, um, nine point, excuse me, eight point four percent. But a lot of things in July, we go ahead and prepay such as insurance and that type thing, so that kind of runs our expenditures up first month. That anticipated. Uh, so our expenditures of revenue for the month are at three point two percent. And I want to apologize here, there is an error in the ending fund balance. Uh, the ending fund balance should be seventeen point eight million, so I will get that corrected in the correct. Uh, report out on the website. That should be seventeen point eight million in that first column. Also, I want to let the board know that, um, the beginning of July, um, Gassy has, um. Required some new standards with regards to memo requirements supported for. And one of those is our purchase order in conferences. So, um. That is basically, um, the balance of the purchase orders that we have issued at the double looking at the end, what's left at the end of July. Uh, and that amount at the end of July was two point two million. Now, I know that's quite huge, but basically that's made up of, um. Any purchase orders that we put out at the beginning of the year, which was, at this time was, um. Custodial services for management. And our modular, uh, that we're missing at the middle school. That was pretty much the chips on. Made up with a few quarters, um, kind of on the general front, so.
You would any school members, swabs as well? Just out of curiosity here, we're going to be writing this in commerce down with the actually?
Yes, yes, so each month that commerce will be brought down because of that, since that might help you out for those, those two things. And then, you know, they vary as they're issuing other purchase orders at this end of year. Uh, July, I had at the end of March, with the garden there, you know, the isn't really been received, it's been received and paid there. Sausage seats start like in July, we're at nine hundred, probably one thousand. Eight thirty, might be.
Oh, no, not too bad. Here we are, twenty twenty-one compared to twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, twenty-seven point seven, well, that was a good year. So it's now maybe six million, um, seven months through. We appreciate the local dollar spend. All right, if you have any other. I have one more question, will your, uh, mandated annual statement for core. Um. Suitable to our meeting schedule?
I reported to you September third yet, so we'll have a report, um, at the September meeting and then we'll just be posted. The actual submission, we'll be there.
September twenty, I will leave that one in. Go to, tell your, uh, gee, that suits your submission deadline.
Yeah, that gives, in fact, that we're not far, that is, it's time to get it actually launched again, and then it gives us, you know, ten days to write.
Yeah, what's it, thank you. Uh, Washington takes that for work. All right, I got a motion, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second, that's the range, all those in favor? All right, thank you. This is ready.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You each have a flyer in front of you for our five-year legacy fundraiser that we're hosting for high school right now. Um, thank you, Mr. Smith, for securing our wonderful honorary chair. Tommy Aaron, who's a little one that from the class of nineteen fifty-five. Mr. Aaron has been very helpful by letting us use his image at our flyers. And, um, we've also been very kind to the school. And so you'll see these flyers distributed on our football games and certainly through social media. You know, our website, I think we're going to take just a moment to, um, take you through what the process is to purchase these bricks. Um, to set up this payment system, we actually set up an account with the North Georgia Community Foundation. Specifically for this purpose, we will, fifteen dollars of the brick will be used to cover the cost of engraving. The other fifteen will go directly to the nineteen sixty-four one thousand scholarship fund. That benefits our current Gainesville High School graduates. And so that fund is held at the North Georgia Community Foundation. And so, and you can take us to, um, our website, this is where you can purchase the bridge. You just click on Legacy Brick Campaign or scan QR code on the line. And then from there, it redirects you, um, to the North Georgia Community Foundation page. So that all of this purchasing can be done through there, so click on that one. You'll see in this image that the bricks will be located in front of the media cafeteria at Gainesville High School. So those bricks that are located there right now are on the links that will be replaced with the engraved bricks. There's thousands of bricks that were located at the front entrance of the high school that are going to be reengrained. Those were purchased in nineteen ninety-two thousand, um, era and those bricks will be reengrained exactly as they were. Um, unless we receive information from community member that they would like to change, maybe because of a typo years ago. Or, or, um, some other error needs to be corrected. So we can correct those, we don't need, they'll just reprint, reprint exactly as they were and replace and combine. With an additional two thousand bricks that we don't sell as part of this campaign. Some question? So, Eddie, you'll just click really quickly, you'll see, you'll go down, we'll show up on the forum. So we've got some great pictures of Tommy here, this is where you just select thirty dollars to purchase. And then from there, you fill in more contact information. The next screen is the payment window. And then the final screen is where you would enter your customization. And so, payment is required before customization, so that we don't have any confusion there. And once that payment is submitted, then you can interview each line, three lines, it can have seventeen characters. And, um, so then from there. Again, thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Dallas, of course, for making this project possible and the work that we're doing here.
So folks can do the old action, like, uh.
Yes.
Fill in this out and write a check.
Absolutely, so checks can be, um, the liberty to Gainesville High School, um, to your social office, of course. But, um, the preferred way, we would just take them directly to the North Georgia Community Foundation. Checks are written to the North Georgia Community Foundation with the memo of Gainesville High School Legacy Brick Campaign. Um, but of course, that can be, um, walked across the street to the Community Foundation office very easily. But, but it's also easy to purchase them online, they're, we're pushing this already, so it's seventy-five, we did a little salt roll out last week. So I think it's going to go well and we can hopefully sell it at the end of the year. You can count for here.
Any other questions, Mrs. Penn? If you'd be able to.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, since all the principals are here, it's good to see you, Mr. Biden, I know better. Uh, so far, we've had a pretty good start to the school year, Friday was the first school day with all eight thousand of our students in attendance, as you can imagine. The afternoon pickup time is always a little hectic, uh, but the middle school where I was at, forty fifteen, all the students and buses were gone. On the best day, that's four o'clock. So it'd be the first little day with everybody being fifteen minutes late, that's fantastic. And by five fifteen, all the students have been returned home and the buses were either on the way back or in the bus park. So just a, a great start, uh, got a lot of feedback about open house and the relationship building there, the stack of start and feedback that we get. From that as well, especially for the, uh, students that are new to that school or just new to school in general. What I did realize Friday morning, when I was at the parents who for two days would get there at a certain time, there was a lot more traffic trying to drop the child off on Friday. And so, uh, you can tell that they were learning what, uh, the regular days are going to look like. So, one thing I did want to point out, uh, Eddie, if you go to our website. We, last year, if you remember, we released a weekly COVID report that included COVID positives as well as quarantines by school. They included in-school and out-of-school quarantines. Uh, this year, uh, we are starting it again, you can go and click on it. And. Not sure why it showed up like that, imagine the schools still left. There we go, uh, we'll be updating this every Friday afternoon or evening, uh, based on the information that's exposed at that time. You can see last week, we had five new positive COVID cases across the district. This may be the last time for quite a few weeks that it'll be that low, we do anticipate the number to pick it up. Uh, and so we know that that's going to happen. Uh, we will continue to communicate with the community, the youth board regarding any adjustments that we need to make to move into remote with certain classrooms or quarantine classrooms. Or mask mandates within certain schools. Uh, we just know that we'll continue to be flexible as we have been for the last eighteen months at this point. So just, uh, information's there, we're not recording the quarantine, the reason we're not. It's because we do have a number of employees and students that are vaccinated and they're not requiring quarantine. So it felt like putting quarantine information out does not represent the full, um, the full data that is out there. So we will be sticking, uh, to the positive cases at this time. Any questions related to back to school or COVID report before we move on to the other items?
Just, just to go ahead, um, did we conduct a survey of the staff, see?
No, we have not yet, um, we wanted to, we wanted to, when we first got back, uh, we started to hear a lot of people say that we're going to get this. We wanted some of that kind of go by us, that those numbers should be as high as possible.
Uh, and then when will we be, uh, getting the enroll counts, is there a certain date?
Uh, in the official formal count date could be in October, but we could get you probably, usually you want to be around day fifteen. Uh, we give our students the first ten days to show up, so then we start with the problem, we get that for that. So, um, we'll try to add that to, uh, September seventh, the next full moon.
Uh, Dr. Williams, can you also speak to the, uh, COVID vaccine testing? In that our school nurses are not doing the testing, so what options do the families have?
Most of our doctors, uh, believe there's still a spot at Allen Green Soccer Complex, or they are still doing testing on a daily basis.
It's not maybe more, it's.
Certain times of the day.
One, they want to say probably, but last I checked, the website was incorrect, so.
Well, you can't sell that information out. Thank you. You got any other part, there's two items. All right, if you will, uh, Mr. Mayor, pull up on that top left one there, there's a, this banner's going to go on the website. Uh, we'll start to share some of this information. Uh, Mr. Lou Major is here with us this evening, uh, principal at GNS West Campus. One of the things that as we start to roll out, you know, a lot of information has been decided and a lot of information needs to be shared. And so we've worked with both Gainesville Middle School, East Campus, as well as Money Bill and G D A. Regarding opportunity, I just opened to our public, we'll start promoting this, uh, in the late August, early September. The same information will be shared at all three of these information sessions. It basically comes down to which one is apparent fits best into your schedule. It's a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, you'll see one is provided each week, one the week on September twenty-first, one on September twenty-ninth, and one on October seventh. So what will be shared during that time of attendance, um, we'll look at the class size, we'll be looking at the process that we'll be using to identify administration, teachers, and so forth. Uh, really just give the parents an opportunity to meet Mr. Major, uh, and just kind of relieve some of those anxieties about how we're going to do our best. Uh, to split current Gainesville Middle Schools into two separate campuses. The third item here is this Thursday, uh, depending on weather. Hopefully by then it won't be too soggy out there, the community probably, uh, this is the, I believe, the third physical iteration of it, uh, we were not able to do it last year. This is the third opportunity that we have, a community pepper, I will just kind of pull together, uh, a time to kind of kick off the athletic season, really one of anything else. You can see the teams that will be there, that will be introduced and also some place paying a grand performance. And then some treats and abouts house can be available as well. It's always great to see the baby kick it off and to fill in the gaps in between a lot of the other stuff. So just kind of marking calendars for Thursday, from six and eight P M, that will happen at T Park. On Friday, uh, we will be releasing both Gainesville Middle School and Gainesville High School at one o'clock. Uh, you may have received a message earlier today, a little early, a little premature from when we intended to send it out later this evening at seven o'clock. Uh, we're running into some logistical challenges, uh, both with transportation and with some personnel regarding, uh, an event that's happening on Friday evening before the jail class. Uh, we are at the mercy of when they set the time and because of the time, it's creating some major issues for us logistically. Uh, so what we're doing is adjusting our schedule on Friday, where elementary schools will still be released at the same time, no change. Uh, but Gainesville Middle School and Gainesville High School will release at one P M. So in other words, the buses will go there first, those children will be able to be home before their younger siblings get home from the typical, uh, elementary Friday release. And then the last item, uh, we have rescheduled, we no longer ribbon cutting, we have more of an open house opportunity, Advanced Study Center. We'll do it on, uh, September the seventh, prior to the formal work session that we'll have at five thirty. So we'll be following up with some of this information given to you, uh, in a, in a different format. But just wanted to give you an update on a few of the things that we have going throughout the community, a busy last two weeks, a busy week coming up, with just a lot of great things going on in the city. Any other questions?
Speaking of the best studies, as I said, what we need the scheduler to discuss is seeking a local plan.
That can be a hard one to say. Good evening. Because we release C T A D, or Career Technical and Agricultural Education Funds, we are required to submit a local plan to the Children's Department of Education. That plan also requires your approval. There are non-re requirements for receiving C T A D funds, you can see those on the outline below. We incorporate those all throughout our C T A D program. However, in addition to those requirements, we also have, um, some additional goals that, um, we're looking to data and become of the votes and how they best fit our system. For this year, they include to continue working through the items in Multi-Year Workforce Development Plan. This plan is heavily focused on our, our community industry partners' needs. And this year, that focus will be on the healthcare pathway and helping our students lead G H S certifications that will help them to be work-ready. Uh, we will also be incorporating Employability Skills Lessons K twelve. You and I may take those for granted because we've been in workforce for a long time, but you can never start this to birth. Uh, some of those include, um, communication skills, motivation and initiative, leadership, flexibility, following directions, teamwork, patience, adaptability. Um, at that elementary level, those have been taught by the counselors and with other staff members through lessons. And at the middle and high schools, um, they will be incorporated into the C T A D course standards. We will also continue to equip the classrooms at the Advanced Study Center. And as you guys know, this is the way our fiscal year runs, you know, a lot of those ones have not been available until July. And so we're, we're starting that process now. Uh, we'll also continue to develop the Community for Science Pathway. We have a team that has already been working on that, and so there will be outlined those sources, um, in that sequence, uh, from elementary, middle, and high throughout the rest of this year. And with the opening of the second middle school, it is very important that we ensure the middle school's C T A D course offerings align with the high schools. So I don't have to provide any more information.
And some of the information regarding the middle school piece, as we've been provided with in the research sessions. The workforce development plan is what we did in conjunction with Carl Benson, as the government finished up in twenty nineteen, this is just a continuation of planning that we designed a couple of years ago.
Any other questions? Two things, uh, trying to, uh. Correct me if I'm misunderstanding, that only a portion, maybe about half of the C T A D program moved into the new advanced studies building, is that correct?
They, uh, they're going to be engineering the technology, they need consumer science, construction, manufacturing, and healthcare.
Okay, and where then are the remaining, uh, C T A D personnel and forces?
They will be first floor of the new facility. So right now, they're dispersed around, uh, the high school, they will be the first floor of the new building, yeah, thanks.
Okay, I understand. Secondly, let me repeat a concern that I have had just for several years, it's the A. That in my opinion, we are deficient in the A. And this is an agriculture town, agriculture, it's agriculture marketing, but I believe there are opportunities for us to advance our A. So, that's just a personal plug, thanks for listening.
We'll take it into consideration.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
All right, we need to, we recommend us to adopt, I was only going to die, question by Mr. Smith, second, I'm Mr. Mitchell, any questions? All of you, question carries.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Um, last item, any discussion on? All right, uh. Better than two. Better than two. Our new construction is drawing lots of attention in the city and beyond. And is drawing lots of visitors, some VIP, uh. High profile visitors onto the campus. It might be move us to designate a protocol host whenever a VIP is scheduled. Um, there are lots of good reasons to reach out to us first and just others in the community. When we have a VIP visitor and a protocol host candidate, that will certainly be helped to do that. And this, this, for now, applies to the high school, but soon it will apply to Gainesville Middle School West and wherever else we're going to do it, so just want to plant that seed, please.
Yes, I'll give Mr. Green to discuss it soon.
Motion for adjournment? I have a second, I have a second from Mr. Mitchell, all those in favor? Good evening, everyone.